All right, good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting of January 11th, 2022 at 7:00. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is being taped by Area 58 Community Access Media. And our notes tonight are going to be done by the video. So if everybody could please speak into the microphone and so their voice can be heard. We do have a sign in sheet at the end table for everybody to sign into. And this will go off to the lady taking our minutes. So the first thing we have tonight on the agenda is the public hearing continued. It actually was closed at our last meeting, but it was on the application of JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC requesting a special permit for fast food or drive-in restaurant and a site plan review pursuant to sections 2200, 2300, and 2330. So at our last meeting, we closed the public hearing. And since then, we had, we've received the conditions. And I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look through the conditions. But let me just read the end of these conditions. Now, these conditions were done by the applicant lawyers. I have sent a copy to Amy Questle, and I haven't heard anything. And I don't know if Andy Glines from Fussin' O'Neil has had a chance to look at this. But I will just go through the waivers and then we'll talk to Andy about this. And we'll talk about what we do with these conditions. I just also want to state that, see Cornelius Shea's here, John Gatski's here, Bruce Mackey, myself is here, Ellen Sidillo's here, Richard Dion's here. And Kevin Robinson is on remote participation tonight because he tested positive for COVID. So he decided not to sit in with us tonight, but he's participating remotely. So let me just go through. There was a couple of waivers. And I don't know if all the members have had time to look at this. So the waiver had a waiver as requested from the requirement to create a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer along the building and sideline due to substantial open area site development restrictions imposed to protect the well radius of 100 feet and stormwater improvements. Furthermore, side and rear adjacent properties contain extensive wetland resource areas, natural buffers, and agricultural uses, no residential uses of but the site. So the second is a waiver as requested from the requirement to provide interior parking lot landscaping due to the short, less than 180 feet end to distance to the parking lot. Each row of parking is six spaces or less. However, the applicant will install a landscape island to the northeast of the retail store to further define separation from the retail and the tradesman parking lots. And we had talked about these waiver requests at our last meeting. Say, the board voted January 11th, 2020. Okay, so that was, that's something else. So the conditions are the project shall be constructed as approved in the site plan and decision. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Two, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site during construction. Sedimentation and soil erosion control shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during the construction and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. Three, the applicant shall adhere to the conditions outlined in the Carver Fire Department comment letter dated November 8th, 2021. Four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, A, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection deposit account shall be paid; B, as built plans shall be submitted to the towns engineer and planning department in both electronic and hard copy from prior form prior to the final inspection; and C, in accordance with section 3180, which is compliance, the Carver zoning bylaw, the town engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. Five, the applicant shall install a four-foot-high black vinyl fence. The bottom one foot of the fence will have critter fencing with large enough openings to allow for the passage of small wildlife. No trespassing signage shall be affixed along the north and south property lines on the fence. No trespassing signs shall be posted at 50-foot intervals along the north sideline affixed to post. Six, the two mature holly trees located in the center of the property shall be transplanted in shaded areas if their current location cannot be preserved. If the trees cannot be transplanted, two new holly trees will be planted on site in a shaded area. Seven, the applicant shall install a landscape island to the northeast of the retail store to further define a separation from the retail and tradesman parking lots. Eight, the applicant shall submit a sign permit application for the planning board to issue a signed permit prior to ordering singular freestanding sign not to exceed 10 feet in height or 10 square feet in area. Nine, the proposed tradesman's bay shall only be allowed to store household quantities of fuel or fluids necessary to the business. Ten, the outdoor storage of trucks or overnight outdoor parking of any vehicle on site is prohibited. Truck parking is restricted to deliveries, loading, unloading operations, and daytime parking associated with tradesman's use. Eleven, a seasonal vermin control program and contract shall be required for the site while the ice cream shop is open. In addition, an annual maintenance contract shall be established and proof provided to the planning board and Board of Health. Twelve, the stormwater management system shall be maintained as prescribed in the long-term pollution prevention plan. Thirteen, the water withdrawal rate for the site shall comply with the DEP's non-transient community water supply issued under PWS ID number 4052008. The water withdrawal rate shall not exceed 1,000 gallons per day with a pumping limit of 999 gallons per day. Fourteen, in the event of tenancy changes, the owner shall notify inspectional services, planning, and the Board of Health of any such changes. Any appeal of this decision must be filed pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 117, and shall be filed within 20 days of the filing of this decision with the town clerk.
One of the waivers is missing.
All right, which one is that? Okay, let's talk about that then.
It's not an issue for me, but it should be included. Section 3242 that requires a 25-foot side setback due to the over 25 parking spaces, 25 or over, requires a 25-foot side setback. And that's section 3242.
Okay.
It's a waiver that's just not listed specifically in here.
Did we talk about that before?
We talked about it, but I think we kind of got lost in the shuffle. But otherwise, you know, it's not going to be in compliance.
Okay. All right, Andy, did you have anything to add to that? What do you want us to wait? Let me talk to any of the other board members. Have any other thoughts about the conditions here? All right, we're back to you.
Andy Glines, professional civil engineer for Fussin' O'Neil, acting as the town civil engineering consultant. I have been in touch with the applicant, and they made some final revisions prior to the last hearing on December 28th and have addressed all our comments that we had on the submission. I didn't get a chance prior to the meeting to review the decision letter, but looking over it now, I guess I noted two things. If you'd like, I can point them out now or formally mark something up for both.
Yeah, I suppose, yes, yeah, whatever you can do. You know, I don't know. I mean, we've got two ways to go. We could, we could sign this tonight, or what we could do is finalize this thing, make one of the changes that Mr. Shea just asked for. And if there's anything that you wanted to add to it, as you're saying, as you're talking now. And then, we didn't have a chance for Amy Questle from KP Law to take a look at this. So, I mean, we could make those changes, and then we could send them off and make sure that Amy could take a look at this. And then, and then we could finalize it at our next meeting, I guess.
Yeah, I think they're, I mean, I think they're minor enough in nature that they could be addressed. Looking at the waiver requests, I believe section 3200 regarding the 10-foot-wide landscape buffer that previously was approved when you closed the hearing, I believe that section number should be 3251. I don't have the bylaws in front of me. I can pull them up on my phone. But based on our review memo, there was a different section pertaining to that waiver. And then also, there's a condition written in here that isn't reflected in the plans, specifically regarding a parking space. So it's number seven, condition number seven. The applicant shall install a landscape island to the northeast of the retail store to further define a separation from the retail and tradesman parking lots. It's not a requirement, but it was a recommendation by Fussin' O'Neil to add one more parking spot to further define the drive aisle that goes back to the proposed retail store as well as the tradesman storage base. So it, I guess I defer to the board on whether or not they would actually like that parking spot added. But if not, then it should be stricken from the, hold on my phone. Then it could be, should be stricken from the, as a condition if you don't actually want that parking spot.
So it's number seven you're talking about?
Is it on the plans?
Right now, it's showing six parking spots that are perpendicular to the retail store. I'm recommending only having five parking spots so that the northern, this would be just adding a landscape island there.
Right in this one here?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
So it'd be the plan right or the north side of that row of six parking spots.
Okay. That sounds reasonable to me. How do you feel?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
More landscaping, the better.
Yeah, I agree.
We're allowing a big reduction in side setbacks, so I'd like to see more.
Okay.
And I guess it's important to note that with removing that one proposed spot, the applicant would still be far exceeding the required spaces needed for this use.
Okay.
That's the 26th spot, wasn't it? I thought there were 26 spots.
I believe they have 30 proposed total for all uses. And they're required to have 12, so they're, they're well above what they need.
That would make sense.
So that would have to be changed on the plans too, right?
It should be, well, it's written as a condition right now. So ideally, if the applicant could revise that on the plans before you sign the plan set and pass them on to the building official, that would be ideal. But I don't think it would need to be addressed necessarily, you know, before you vote on the decision.
Okay. Because Mr. Pazursky's here tonight with us, so, and he's, and he's got that, okay. All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right. So I suggest that, so we have these conditions. Can, I guess I'll have to talk to you, Andy, about how we, you know, change the conditions from these sheets here. Maybe mark it up, and then, and then I can have the planning board secretary change, add those conditions to this. And then, if I, would we be able to have the revised plans for our next meeting? And then, if everybody's in agreeance, we can sign the plans and then approve the conditions at our next meeting. All right, does that sound reasonable? Okay. Okay, so what I'll need is a motion to continue the hearing to January 25th at 7:00.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that motion. Cornelius Shea seconds that motion.
Okay, so Ellen made the motion. Mr. Shea second. Okay, so that would be to continue meeting. Which changes. And we'll still be within the time constraint or whatever? Okay. Okay, so let's take a vote, and the vote would, will be, a voice vote, will be a vote amongst each member. So because we have a remote participant, so Mr. Shea?
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sidillo, aye.
All right, so that's 5-0, okay. All right, thank you. We'll see you at our next meeting to wrap this up. All right, so the next, we have a public hearing notice. So in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Richard de Benedictus, P.E., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 5300, and 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 20 Shoestring Road, which is Assessors Map 124 Lot 13-0-R in the Carver mass. The project is the improvements of Jellystone Park, which includes centralized wastewater treatment facility, a new set of water supply wells, and improved roadway access located in a residential agricultural district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the planning department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, chair, published dates December 23rd and December 30th, 2021.
Hey Bruce, before we get started, can we take a quick recess? I'm on call, so I gotta.
Okay.
I just gotta check in real quick.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So I don't know if you want to set up while Mr. Gasky's gonna take a call and...
Bruce, the applicant informed me they have some updated plans, large scale, for the latest one that they sent. I guess would the board members like a full size set?
Well, okay, so we'll resume the meeting. John's back. So it all depends upon the members, how they feel. I mean, this is the way it's going to go. We'll, we'll hear this tonight. We can see it on the board. If any members want a copy of the plan, that's fine. We will schedule a site visit for this, and then we'll continue this meeting to our next meeting. So we're going to have at least a couple of meetings of this, so just wanted to tell everybody that. Is there anyone here that wants an updated full-size plan?
I don't need it, no.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
I would like a, the smaller plan, yes, but I don't.
Yeah, do we have, oh, you just have an updated full set right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about what you've updated and we'll go on from there.
I should also add that it's going to be additional update because Mr. Glines and I met out in the field last Wednesday, and he's going to give us some information tonight. So these plans are kind of interim situation right now.
Okay.
So there'll be additions made to that based on the comments tonight. So basically, this is what we showed, we had an informational meeting a couple of weeks ago, and this is pretty much the same, but this is the site, the entire site, it's approximately 60 acres. Could you move that so we can actually see? Sure, sure. There you go, that's much better, thank you. Okay, so just to give you an orientation, so to speak, this is phase one, this area here, this is what was active over the last many, many years of shady acres and tour. Mount Kate Rees was bought the property and made it a stone for instance. So this is the active area, there's a little bit of activity up here, but this is going to be a picture of phase two. We're primarily concentrating relative to trying to get open by April 15th on phase one, which is down here. We think we'll avoid primarily the expansion, which would be a section down here that doesn't have moved yet, with the whole, and this whole area is considered phase two. So these two are the expansion areas. Again, as I said, we met with Mr. Glines, we did a site walk last Wednesday, and we had some comments at that time, which we'll formalize tonight. But basically, the idea was, I showed it in the, the idea is, and pretty much what we've done is, we had some very steep slopes up here, the original. After getting used to here, we did a preliminary design, which took into account all the steep slopes, and they became a problem. So we redesigned it to fall this down to about 2% across the site, 2-3%. There was erosion happening under shady acres and continued under Jellystone for this past year. We have a stormwater plan that we're working on as a result of our discussion with Mr. Glines. And having reduced the slope dramatically, it changes, it also drains, it changes dramatically the drainage because we don't have rushing waters coming down steep slopes anymore. Now, by leveling this off, we've removed some of the trees, because you kind of have to do that, but there are substantial amount of trees there. Plus, the owner is, has a company coming in that's coming to do landscaping, which Rob Crooks, who's the project manager from the ownership, can, should talk to about that. But basically, they're going to add trees and add property and landscaping. And we don't have that plan yet, they're working on it right now. So this, in effect, is a revision from the original plans we gave you several weeks ago when we first held it up there. But again, there'll be more. Now, this plan shows the water lines and sewer lines coming down here. And you see these, these various circles, yeah, those are all the sewer manholes. In addition, the water lines are going, we're adding, to the water lines, we add water gates so you can shut off certain parts of the park, you know, if you have a problem with a water line. So we're going to have, we're going to do that. It's not on this plan yet, but it will be on plans revised as a result of tonight's meeting. So we have that going on, and this is, this is phase two. Again, there was a little bit of activity up here before, but we're revising, hoping we're not using this currently either. So the idea is to put, I started last time, was here, put cabins, because that's kind of the newest thing, just trailers and RVs, they've got a cabin, that looks like a log cabin, it's on wheels, it's all the, so it's there currently. So it's, 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 you know, and it will be rented. Now, some of the, some of the trailers are rented too for certain parts of season, but these cabins will be, it's kind of more like a destination than the rest of the park. Again, we won't see that until next year, but we'll be preparing it once we open up on 15th, with the phase one part of the park. We'll be able to work back here and sort of be out of the way. So this dark spot over here is a leaching field, a wishbuck treatment plant. The DEP is overseeing that right now. It's going through what they call a hydrogeological study, which is required by the DEP, and those, they're going to know the amount of flow that's going to come in here when the full place is developed, and then see where that water's going. It's a standard for any wishbuck treatment plant. The wishbuck treatments itself is down here, this is what we call a treatment train. It's on your ground. There are covers coming a couple of feet above the ground, but then we shield it from the landscaping and all that stuff. So it's not like, it's not like a wishbuck treatment plant, they see a big building. There will be a kind of a shed, there will be the control building, but it's not a big facility, it's just enough to have the panels and the controls of the treatment plant. So basically, all the water that's coming in this season is going to be directed to a pump station that's going to pump up to this treatment plant, and then the treatment plant's going to go into that. Now, that's not necessarily something that you have to worry about as a playground, but it is showing what we're really doing, we're having complete wishbuck treatment and complete storage system and complete water system. Water system is...
Is that the leaching field to the left of the...
Is that the leaching field to the left of the proposed soil absorption system? If you go just...
This is the leaching field, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so these two, two areas off to here are not part of the septic, septic field?
I, I might have the old plan.
I have, yeah, I have the old plan, so...
Yeah, but this has been revised since then. The original leaching field, there's a two-hundred-foot riverside situation.
Yes.
And even though we, if we put the leaching field in the second hundred feet, we decided to move it.
Okay.
So right now, so the leaching field, we've kind of twisted it and took it out. This is the two-hundred-foot line here. So this is the one-hundred-foot line, sixty-five-foot situation. We're already before the Conservation Commission. And we just have to do a couple more things for them, and then their area will finish up the wheels for the nineteenth on the Conservation Commission. So we did move that, so that's a revision. The thing you have is the old plan. Again, this is all water and sewer. The water's coming down. This is phase two again. And above phase two is a block that's really just a lot, it's been banned for... It's been banned for probably about fifteen, seventeen years. And Mount Kate recently was able to buy it and auction it and set it up. And we're permitting wells, there's four wells. They have to have a certain circumference around them, a certain perimeter. This is for what we call the zone one, which is a protective area. So we have to have four wells in order to fit, basically, four circles in here, which basically is an off-lawn. The wells have to be at least fifty feet from the park. The DEP's already out there. They agree with what we're doing, but we have to go through a very lengthy approval, permitting process. So we're in the process of doing that. Basically, what's gonna happen is that the water lines are gonna come down to the phase two area. So we have to do some of the roads this year in order to get the water line down because that water line's gonna serve phase one eventually. Originally, we were able to use the existing wells in phase one, according to the DEP, for another year while we're permitting this. But as soon as we permit this, we'll be bringing this line into that phase one, and the other wells will be abandoned. So as I said, we have basically a community water system, a community sewer system. There won't be any more septic systems, there won't be any more pump stations. So it'll be a dramatic improvement over here. In addition to that...
Good question. The four proposed wells, are they in the wetland?
Yeah, they're in the well. It's allowed, the DEP's been out there, the Conservation Commission's been out there. Basically, we'll be putting a roadway in there. We'll be filling approximately three thousand square feet, probably twenty feet wide, about two hundred feet, something around there, a hundred fifty feet. And we'll replicate that over here, there's a replication, doubling whatever we fill, we double. And that's, and goes with what the state, I used to say, as far as the wetlands act. But they've been out there. Actually, we all walked out there, the Conservation Commission and the DEP did. Really, not wet, except for the perimeter has a little trench around it. But still, they allow wells to be in the well. You just have to raise them up on some kind of, you know, little roadway. And so, as I said, it's already been under scrutiny. It's just gonna take a while to go through the whole permitting process. You have to do some drilling, you have to do some testing, and there's a whole procedure before the DEP. So that's generally what's going on. Any questions about any...
Could you point out the area where the proposed water park is gonna go?
Yes. Just go out and design it. It's also in your old plan, it's in seventy-eight. The recreation, so you have to pull out the tires, and that's where the water park is.
And that well that's there is an existing well that's supposed to be closed?
That would be probably, that's what I'm thinking, it's in phase two.
Do you have any other questions?
I have a couple more.
Okay.
Is it... Access roadways, new curb cuts, are there gonna be any in regards to connections to public ways?
No. This is basically, two streets is down from, from Journal Street. Okay, so it's, it's quite a, I don't know, maybe a half, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly. So we don't start until we get to the bottom here, but you know, the empty block, which we don't own. So our property is from here on in, so there's no curb cuts having to do with public flats.
Is there work already? It says the work within the previously active areas to improve the water supply and wastewater system is underway?
Right.
Is that...
Well, the wastewater system is going through, it's like a four-step process with the DEP. First of all, we have to test it out there, the soil is actually less than two man correct. The second part of that is to bring in a hydrogeologist. And he has to put some test wells around at certain distances from the leaching field. And he does a study, he's doing it now, at the water management this week. And he actually just finished his analysis. Basically, he develops a determination of where the water goes, and that's the ground. Also, with the monitoring effect is underneath a leaching field from the amounts of water that's coming in there. And then he has to give that to the DEP, they have to approve that. We already have the leaching field that we, which was a treatment plant designed, but I can't submit it officially to the DEP until they've approved the hydrogeological study. So that's a third step, and the fourth step is the actual approval of the system in place.
So when you say work is underway, it's not installing water lines?
No, construction number one.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
It can't be started yet.
Now, is this all the electric? Because you're gonna need some pretty heavy upgrades for this?
Yeah, there are some upgrades, oh, yeah. Like the terminal to Mr. Crox's, where it's going along to electrical aspect.
You sure? Uh, I was wondering, is it all gonna be underground from your utility connection in regards to the public access?
Yeah, what we're doing right now, we're working with Leftland here to, we're looking for every source for any three-phase power down there. And we really want that for a water park, or we won't be ready to. Everything going out to the individual camp sites will be underground, stuffed up with individual pedestals, fifty amp single-phase power at each pedestal.
But the whole project will be underground from your connection point?
Uh, well, there are utility poles out there that will stay at the above. But our branch circuit underground will be, we undergrounded some branches there.
Okay, will there be additional poles added in regards to the project?
Uh, not right now, no.
Okay.
We're not planning anything underground, no. If anything, we would like to see if I ever source can take some of the pole help.
Great.
Actually, the wastewater treatment plant has to have three phases, and has to have two hundred, was it?
Two or three.
It wasn't named, but three phases. So it has to be provided by anybody, but it's also, our park is also needs that kind of power.
Now, in regards to wastewater testing or licensed operation, operators on site?
They have to, under the groundwater discharge regulation, they give you a...
Yeah, oh, it's best if you speak, yeah, speaking, thank you.
Yeah, the, under the groundwater discharge regulation, which are different than Title V, okay? They have, they share some regulation, but basically, groundwater discharge is a very concise process that you have to go through. But they will, actually, what was the question again?
I was curious about licensed operators and testing.
You're required to have a licensed operator, twelve hours a day, okay? And the groundwater discharge, they have to check, they usually check the panel room and the shed. And they check all the pumps and all that kind of stuff. And they have to issue a report, they have to do testing, a certain amount of testing, which is prescribed by the DEP, what you have to do and how often you have to submit it. Usually, they span off on a monthly basis, and then they might go a little quarter or something. But basically, it's a, it's an operational, operational maintenance agreement that you have to... You have to submit a contract for the operator to the state. And plus, I have to submit, as the engineer, I also have to show that I have a contract to see what's going on there, so...
Because for the first year, I think it might be best to have more often testing to make sure that everything's up and running?
Well, yeah, of course, it's a, it's a season from your code to our code.
Right.
It'll be intense during that period. And maybe, one of the toughest problems about wastewater treatment when you're doing this is like to shut it down in the off-season. So then you have to bring it back up, you know? So, yeah, it's an intense situation, it's very close. The board of health isn't a direct overseer, but they're getting information from the DEP, whether you're testing.
Okay.
Yeah, so like the wells and the, and the septic are all really run and looked over by the state, by the DEP?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And the wrong regiment of, of when you're testing with a test ball, it's all, it's all different from wastewater, from water.
Sorry to interrupt, I just...
Oh, no, no, because I don't know that anybody can hear me anyways. That's all. And geez, I, I just was having some issues with clearly defining the, some of the sixty-five-foot, one-hundred-foot, and the two-hundred-foot zone on these maps, because I see yours is in color, but...
We're not so much submitted to the Conservation Commission, we can provide you with it.
Right, because mine have broken lines and are non-continuous and...
Yeah, that was not done, this was...
Those were really my questions just off the top of my head, you know?
How many campsites do you propose?
Right now, the max we can go is three twenty-four. We have some closed buildings on there, we'll probably take a few sites, I'll leave the closed buildings in. But the closed buildings are based on how many sites we're allowed to have. Right now, we're committed to two-hundred-and-sixty, I think we have two-hundred-and-twelve. On site, we have two-hundred-and-two-sixty, we're looking for in the three-hundred area. So depending on what we're committed for, that will determine how big our supposed building will be.
And I'm new to this, but where do they dump their waste? The waste from the campsites, you know, campers?
That's the way right now, and this is the way it is in many campsites. They have either a dumping station where the RVs are able to go and dunk, and they add that on shady acres. That's gonna be limited. They also have several septic tank areas, which are serving trailers, okay? And then they have a couple places where it's tight tanks that they dump into, that haul out at certain time. That's all gonna change. We're gonna have an actual wastewater treatment system and the sewer system in every street. So every, every campsite will have a place to hook up to the sewer. So there won't be any more dumping in septic tanks, or dumping in tight tanks, or anything like that. It will be all directly to the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
And you were saying you had two-hundred-and-sixty sites, is that's what you're permitted for?
That's what we're permitted for right now, I think we actually operate two-hundred-and-twelve.
Okay, well, this says two-hundred-and-seventy-eight and...
Yeah, originally, that's a number I got from the general manager of the site. And it had two-hundred-and-seventy-eight, but Rob's coming from the ownership commission, so he came up, you know, he came up with the number. And we revised our floor calculations for the wastewater treatment plant based on numbers that they showed me.
Yeah, our campground permits takes two-hundred-and-sixty, I checked it before.
Okay, and that's, that's due to town, a cover?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I don't, I don't need to see it, I trust you. That was really all the questions I had off the top of my head, but thank you.
I got a question. You mentioned the cabins have wheels on them?
Yeah, they're wheeled in, they're on, they're on frame.
And they're gonna stay like that?
Well, they, the same thing they do with trailers, they, they take the wheels off the ground.
Oh, okay, so once they come in, they'll just take the wheels off?
Yeah, it's a really proven source.
Actually, the wheels stay, but they'll be chopped in place right there, they're on jacks. The wheel is barely touching a lot of its for insurance purposes, but they're on flatbed trailers. They get skirted around what looks like a house, you don't even see it, but the tongue of the trailer has a big skirt put over top of that, too.
And then my other question is, you have campers in these buildings. Are they gonna be like campers in one area, or is it gonna be all mixed up?
Right now, and right now in phase one, we're looking at that being more the RV area. And the phase two up on top of the hill would be more cabins. Now, just like any supply chain issue right now, we can't get that many cabins right now. So there will be some RVs, and we'll have to slowly phase in the cabins.
What are the size of the cabins? I didn't see it, don't see it off.
Uh, cabins typically about thirty-two feet, I think they're twelve by thirty-two. There's multiple sizes, we have different vendors that we use. The lot sizes are all forty by sixty.
And how many bedrooms in each of the...
Uh, see, we have like one master bedroom, there's a little bunk area. And some of the lots have a lock here, you climb up in this building there, stairway, the kids open the lock. Kitchen, bathroom, living area.
And none of this is all, you know, nobody will be the year-round, right? Just...
This is not, won't be a year-round part, no.
In the parks that I've been to, I've been some, to one in Mashpee. And they, they have like little cabins or houses in certain parts. They also, friends of ours had their own trailer that they had brought in, that they, and they leased the lot. And I imagine that this was, is what it's gonna be like there. And then they also had room for, so they had a bunch of people that kind of leased and had their, their trailers there for years and years and years. And then they also had areas for people just to drive in and to camp. So it'll, it's, it's a mixture of those three things that'll be happening there, yeah.
We'll have a mixture of seasonal campers, who rent the spot for the whole season. The transient campers who come for a week or a weekend in and out, and that people are coming to stay in cabins.
Okay, the other thing would be, so if you have a cabin, how many vehicles would be allowed to park in that lot? Or do you guys have a big parking area?
Typically, we typically allow one car, we're able to stop for one car. But we do have a parking spaces down at the bottom, too, that they could park at.
Is that on this map anywhere? Because alls I could see is all, all the camping areas.
The camping areas are forty by sixty, so that one should be. So it's, there are diagrams that Mount Kate has. It shows where a unit would be, where a parking space would be, where a campfire setup would be. So each person, instead of having, you know, your neighbor right up against your unit, everybody has their own forty by sixty area, and much, much more organized. And it really, it's really only good for one try. I suppose you could put two small cars on there, but as I said, we, we have parking down here. And we have parking here for RVs. This is a helping area that's already there, that RVs pull in there for a couple nights or something. That's kind of always been there for, you know, so that'll continue to be there. There's a parking area beside there that we opened up, that they constructed, they just threw it out in certain area for cars. But for the most part, they don't have two cars. And I don't think I see too many units with two cars, because usually the family comes and they use it in the...
Right, I figure maybe, you know, especially if they come from somewhere, they might have a friend that might wanna come and spend. And just curious, you know, if there was parking spots where if it's only one car per unit, where do they park if they have their car?
A lot of people have golf carts, and that's, that seems to be the trend anyways. And so you can, they can park, and then you were within that forty by sixty, and they're just more used, that's what they get... just more used, that's what they kept around them, and, and the, uh, Jellystone itself, that's, that's kind of a...
What I'm saying is, so you don't have a, a designated parking lot for excess cars for the childrens?
We, we, uh, we just have a spot, we have a spot down, um, near the existing mini golf area, where we do have some parking, we do have parking spots lined up, but a certain quantity, you know, it's just, it's just a big gravel-out area that we allow for overall parking, yeah? And that still remain, that won't be touched by that area, but...
Sounds like a nice addition to Cal.
We think it will be.
Yeah, I think, uh, when they first came to me this last April, so, I, I say that Jellystone, when my kids were small, they're all, that's also a, a great place to take your kids, you don't have to worry about them, you can certainly, you know, get along, they go to school or whatever, uh, but, um, this is going to be a real upgrade from the ones I went to up in New Hampshire, and the cabins were just shit, and no plumbing at all, we usually had a comb and a shower, you'd have a shower, and there'd be a couple of those, two around, sort of, um, it would be a laundry, laundry building, but for the most part, all these units were not plumbing, so, you know, a lot of these are plumbing, you could choose like one and a half, that thing, sending the trailers, so the thing with cabins is it, it adds a little more blast to the whole thing.
Mm.
It's almost like when you're in a pelvis, when you're surrounded by, you know, by a forest, and you get water, you know, it's a different kind of environment. Like, I think, are you, basically all Jellystones going out or something?
Uh, a lot of ours are, yes, yeah.
How many Jellystones are there?
I don't know how many there are, we have, ooh, we have twenty-eight parks total, I want to say that, uh, somewhere in the, around the twenty range, we have Jellystones, so...
So, cabins are going to have lots, are they?
Yeah.
So all, all that's going to be underground, piping all the way to the, so all the way...
Everything, everything's on there, they pull up into a unit, you know, some picture this is forty by sixty, the cables, uh, cabins up here, cars here, and all of the, the tie-in stuff, like, uh, there'll probably be cable, too, and, uh, water and sewer, it'll be right beside it, in, in a designated place, pretty much in relationship to every, every unit, so they just hook up, you know, and, uh, again, you don't have that messy thing of having RVs, seventy to go to a dump station, there's a difference in where you can't grab pretty much, but this, and this hasn't gone out, but, but they, we actually probably eliminated all these, that we took down, and we were on the side, but, but, yeah, I think the dump stations behind septic, uh, which you feel is going to be on, so you also get the benefit of not having high net rates, this treatment thing now, less than five parks per unit, which is really low, usually sounds like to see things filling in and providing more than ten parks per unit, so, uh, this is going to be, this is a state of the art, really, so, and, uh, it's, it's going to be something that, you know, people will, they probably love to see what, you know, the, it's going to be , you know, I don't see it, only in Peachtree, how it works and how it's set up. We have one that they designed, it's up in, in Situate, it's on a forty B project, that's sixty-eight unit RV, that's a large road, I think that's, people, they don't really know how to size, but it's in there, it's all we love, it's all we have, but, it's very impressive.
What do you expect for traffic? I know, um, the one that I've been to, uh, in Mashpee, um, I think it's a bigger pack than this, um, and they have a mixture of, of units that, that stay there all year long, uh, and, uh, and cabins and, and everything that we're talking about, plus, you know, campuses coming in, um, but, uh, I was just concerned, it's, it's, it's off of a much larger road, and, uh, the main entrance to this is off a smaller road, so what kind of, I, I just don't want to see any kind of traffic congestion there, or...
Traffic backup, I mean...
Yeah, well, I know that there's a long entrance from Tremont Street to, I mean, 'cause I've been, I've been at the site, I think, in the fall, uh, and, uh, it had to be like a quarter of a mile long from Tremont Street before you get up to the main entrance, it, it's a bit of a ways through, um, and there was a pond on the right-hand side, so there was different things, but, um, I, I don't anticipate any traffic backup, but I was just wondering if you're going to do improvements to that entrance there?
Um, what we, what we're proposing on doing is, right down in here, putting like a check-in gate down in here, where, I'm sorry, right in this area here, um, we can actually divert, if things start to get overflow, we can divert back around here and start bringing people around, too, for a while, so that's the reason why we're bringing this proposed check-in station down here.
Now, when I looked at these plans at first, it, does the property actually touch Tremont Street? It kind of looked like the property line was away from Tremont Street?
It, uh, well, no, because we end at the river, and at this point, um, the bottom of Shoestring takes a left there, turn, that's where the property line ends, so, you know, we're not, we're not connected directly to Tremont Street. Shoestring is a street, I don't know.
Okay, I'll have to take a look at that, at the, at, on the plans, um, but, see, we came along the backside of Sampson's Pond, and, see, this is down by Mayflower Road, which is, uh, right there, yeah? So we came up that entrance there where we actually visited the site, so what, what entrance do you plan on using when this...
That's the only one.
That's the only entrance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the question I had is, is that you, there's a, there's a dirt road, is that an easement from Tremont Street to, to the property? Or, or is that, 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 that dirt road, is that through the property?
Well, um, Shoestring comes through the road, is that...
Oh, so you're saying that Shoestring Road is, 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 is actual, an actual road?
Yeah, Shoestring goes right through the whole property, I can tell that, uh, it was, I suppose, uh, yeah, if you look at the Goodman, I'll show you Shoestring, uh, and, uh, so it goes through the site, but it's, for most of the, it's a dirt road.
Right, it just looks like a driveway.
Okay, right here, Shoestring is paved up to about this point right here.
Uh-huh. So it's not really used as a road, it's just used as a park access?
Yeah, I, it's really the only thing it's been used for.
Now, of course, this was active for some of the people involved, April made, which because they were quite, I never saw any kind of traffic situation, kind of going on in Tremont, you know, I mean, people are here to stay, and, uh, it's not that they go to the grocery store, but they're going to have the store here, you know, some basics.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I think once, once they get here, they're going to, they'll, they'll...
Well, we'll, we'll take a look at that when we do our site walk.
Sure.
It, it was just, uh, y- yeah, so actually, the property is not off of Tremont Street, it's off of Shoestring Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're talking about the structure of the property.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's just a little different, and it's very, very different when you, when you see it, um, when you go to the property.
This is going to come through here, so we kind of end it just before, so...
And where did you put the gate up there?
Oh, like a check-in, like a check-in station.
But, uh, you're saying Shoestring is a public access, you can't do anything on that road, you can't put a structure there.
Well, you can't...
It's a public access.
Yeah, you can't.
So, I guess it's been here for many years, so...
But what I'm saying, public access means I can get on there anytime I want, you can't put a check-in gate there to stop people going in there.
Well...
No, there it is. No, yeah?
I think it's probably thinking more along the lines of, uh, that being a turn-off into the property and a check-in at, at the edge of the plaza.
That's fine, yeah, but I mean, you can't...
Is that, that what you're referring to?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we won't put a gate there or anything like that.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and as, what I'm saying, the check-in is actually going to be before the actual entrance, it's going to be, uh, a hundred feet or so, up there, we'll, we'll, if you may have a little...
Yeah, we were just proposing a little spot where at, like, uh, each times, like that on Thursday evening or Friday afternoon or something like that, just having a dedicated space out there just to check people in, and having someone to guide walk to their spot.
Are we going to do a site walk on this?
Yes, yeah, we'll do a site walk, um, we still haven't listened to Andy's comments, I know that he has some, and, um, and, and this is still in development here, too, so, yeah, but, so that's why we, you know, ask as many questions. It, it's, it's a little different, it's something that I personally haven't looked at, uh, this type of development in town before, so it's, it's something, uh, new to me, so, um, it's, it's just something a little different, so we'll just have to take a look at it, but, uh, um, are there any questions by any other planning board members before I let Andy speak about, um, about any concerns that he may have?
If you could, on, on your updated plans, if you could just, uh, more clearly outline Shoestring Road and where it's public and where it be, at what point that ends in regards to the project?
Well, then the question comes to me is, is Shoestring really a public road?
Right.
Or is it just a path that's called Shoestring Road? That, that's, and I think we've got to kind of look at that, yeah.
I know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, we, we, we had a solar project that, um, and everybody here was, that was off of Tremont Street, down Federal Furnace Boggs, and it's actually a road, but it really, or they called it a road, but it really wasn't a road, it was a driveway to the, to the bog, so, yeah, I'm just wondering if th- this is the same sort of thing? You know, it's just something that we'll just take a look at.
We have to determine that, I kind of wonder for it, well, I'm going to, like, if you go up to our, to our range of this thing, but the fact that the rest of it's packed into the dirt road, it might have ended there for something, just continued it, or it, uh, it would be, be able to determine that.
It might even be, might even be an easement, so...
Right. I mean, I've seen roads in my time, uh, like in Situate, um, where I did a lot of surveying, and they called, uh, Bates Road, I think, was the name of the road, but it, but it actually wasn't a public road, um, and different people wanted to build on it and have, uh, frontage off that road, but, um, although it was called Bates Road, it, it, it really wasn't, um, a, a road to, to, to get, to allow frontage or access to, so, uh, so we just have to, just take a look at that and see what that means to the, I mean, it, it obviously, it's a, it's an access road to, and it has been for a long time, um, so that says something about the, about, you know, it being in use and everything, but, um, you know, I'm just wondering if there should be an easement there or something like that, uh, not, I'm not quite sure, but we'd have to take a look into it.
Okay, one thing, uh, and Mr. Mize would comment on this, but we, we're here for two different, uh, issues, as you said, the special program and the site plan review, and I think there was some controversy, we would have needed the special program, so if we can address that.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're asking for a waiver on that, and, uh, if, I don't know, if anyone had, had some comments on, just wanted to bring that forward, so we can settle that issue.
Okay. And then, and, in the end, I, I don't know if we need, uh, well, we'll, we'll talk to Andy about that, I, I don't know if we need, uh, you know, K P to, to come in, K P Law to take a look at this also, but, uh, but let, let's, uh, let Andy speak.
Uh, Andy Gleins, Fussin' O'Neill, uh, Town Engineering Consultant, um, as the applicant mentioned, I, I did do a, a site walk already, um, and did a preliminary review of what they've sent so far, um, as you might have gathered, there's still some additional pieces that the applicant needs to prepare and submit to us, uh, for review, so we haven't prepared a formal comment letter yet, um, I guess I will, uh, start with the, the traffic, uh, just 'cause that's what we were talking about most recently, um, as far as trips go, um, and trip counts on, on Tremont Street, um, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think it's necessary to do a, a traffic study, um, but I would like to see the applicant prepare, um, just, uh, a description, written description on, um, what the peak check-in times are, checkout times, uh, I know the applicant already mentioned, uh, Fridays, you know, might be a, um, you know, a peak travel time, and if they have any historic data on, you know, what the turnaround is during that timeframe, um, I think that would provide myself and the board enough information on, uh, whether or not there would be any notable impacts to, um, Tremont Street, um, at the moment, I don't believe there will be, um, but I'd just like some supporting documentation from the applicant regarding that. Um, as they mentioned, I don't anticipate any, um, hazards created by, uh, this, you know, increased use, um, as they mentioned, they're going to have a, a check-in station that's going to be located away from Tremont Street, so they'll have adequate room for queuing coming in as well as leaving, um, and then actually the act of checking in, uh, will kind of stagger, uh, those trips, um, so, uh, but I'd just like something formal from the applicant to kind of document that. Um, as far as the, um, access from Shoestring to Tremont, I haven't verified myself whether or not Shoestring is public, has a public right-of-way, um, or if there's an existing easement, um, across that lot, um, I would guess that there's an existing easement, um, but I don't know if the applicant surveyor, uh, might be able to pull that information up, uh, if not, I'd, I'd recommend, uh, contacting the planning department, uh, they might be able to dig that up for you, um, and if, uh, you know, the applicant and the town run into dead ends, I can kind of look into that a little bit closer on my end, but I haven't been able to find anything readily available at the moment. Um, as far as, uh, interior access goes, um, I did speak with Jesse Boyle, uh, the deputy fire chief, uh, he is aware of the project, but he hasn't done a formal review yet, um, he did provide, um, a brief email to me, um, that provided some initial comments, um, mostly pretty standard about, um, providing sufficient width and turning radius, uh, and an all-weather surface on the access roads, um, so, uh, I guess, um, really the, uh, I'm going to refer to the, the fire chief and continue to coordinate with him on those aspects, um, typically, he'll do his own site inspection, um, which he'll coordinate with the applicant for, and get a better idea of what the existing and proposed conditions are for those access roads. Um, as far as clearing and grading goes, um, as the applicant mentioned, they, they are doing some grading, really to level the site, um, in the existing, um, campground site area, uh, as well as their proposed, um, in my opinion, the proposed grading is, um, reasonable, um, and really they're just smoothing out some of the undulating topography that's existing on site, um, unfortunately, that does require them to remove some of the existing trees that were there, um, but based on my site inspection, uh, it appears that the applicant's doing, uh, what they can to preserve the existing trees on the site, um, but I would like to see the landscape plan, uh, and what they're going to propose for replacement, um, based on my conversation with the applicant during the site walk, uh, they were discussing some larger caliper trees, which would, you know, provide some canopy, um, you know, immediately when they're planted, um, really the only trade-off there, more, more expensive to the applicant, but, um, larger caliper trees won't, um, grow as fast, um, just a kind of, uh, side note, the, um, you know, if you plant a three-caliper tree, it, it may, um, establish its root zone quicker, and then it will grow quicker, and then, you know, ten years out, you may end up with the same caliper tree, you know, if you planted a, a three or a five, um, but you'd get more immediate, um, shade coverage and noticeable benefit from a larger caliper tree, so I think that, that's probably the way to go here, um, I don't know if, um, some of the board members, you know, would, uh, be interested in some additional information on that as well. Um, I'd like to see, um, I guess... I'd like to see, I guess, I'd like to see more information on their stormwater approach as well. They haven't submitted a stormwater report yet. They do have some details on a proposed stormwater approach where they have a, really, a subdrain with a perforated pipe adjacent to the road. I provided some initial comments that I was concerned with sediment load to that stone channel, and I think the applicant, especially with the reduced slope in the proposed topography as opposed to the existing topography out there, using a crushed stone surface for the roads in lieu of a compacted gravel base, they're not proposing asphalt or pavement for these access roads. I think that would be sufficient to mitigate any stormwater runoff from the site, and really largely, even with the cabins and the trailers that they're proposing, those are elevated up, and, you know, you'd still be able to... Stormwater would still be able to infiltrate underneath those. As far as I know, there's nothing that would prevent runoff underneath or infiltrating, so in essence, you're not creating, you know, impervious cover that's gonna increase the peak flows and volumes of starch from the site. I haven't spoken with Brooke, the Conservation Agent, directly. I did leave her a message, and I guess based on what the applicant has told me, I understand that their Conservation Commission site walk, as well as meeting, went well, and they're waiting on a DEP number, and that's why their hearing was continued. But I will follow up with Brooke and confirm and get any feedback from her and the Conservation Commission and make sure that's in line with the recommendations and comments that I'm making to the Planning Board. Let's see. As far as the proposed buildings, as well as proposed additions go, I did speak with the building official about this. As the applicant mentioned, there was a question on what use category this project would fall into. So, the project meets the definition of a commercial recreational campground, which is defined in the bylaws, and there's also... It meets a lot of the components that are proposed, existing and proposed, meet the definition or fall under the definition of a commercial recreation outdoors use. The commercial recreational campground is not specifically listed in the use table, but a commercial recreational outdoors use is, and the building official and I both agree that this should be permitted as a special permit, as a commercial recreational outdoors use, which is allowed use by special permit in the rural agricultural zone. If the board members have any other questions regarding that, I guess I would encourage them to reach out to legal counsel, just because it's not... It's not cut and dry in the bylaws, but I did wanna make sure that the building official and Fosn O'Neill are on the same page, so that if the Planning Board approves this project, that the building official would, you know, be in agreement, that they'd be able to issue building permits for the proposed buildings and additions. The buildings that they're proposing, in addition to the check-in booth, which is a small 10-foot by 20-foot structure, they also have a pavilion that's 50 feet by 80 feet, a new maintenance laundry building that's 60 feet by 80 feet, and then, an addition to the campground store, which would be an addition of 15 by 50, and an addition to the recreation building that would be 50 feet by 60 feet. I would like to see a little more information from the applicant on what those buildings will look aesthetically, some elevation drawings, I guess most importantly confirming that the building height on those. Obviously, that's something that the building official will review more thoroughly when the applicant gets to that stage of approval, but I think it's important now that the board has some additional information into what the pavilion will look like, per se, so that they'll have a better understanding, and Fosn O'Neill included, you know, what those aesthetics will be and, I guess, the cover conditions. And that said, the building official and I agree that all those proposed buildings and additions are consistent with the existing use of the site and would fall under the same definition of a commercial recreational outdoor use. So, in my formal memo to applicant and the board, I'm gonna have some language kinda clarifying all that, that I believe should be included in the decision letter ultimately, just to kinda clarify what that sequence of determination was based on the bylaws and those definitions. And that is currently all I have at the moment.
All right, thank you, Andy.
I have just a couple more questions.
Sure.
Is there public access to Ben's Pond? Generally, the state of Massachusetts, all waterways have some form of access or easement. And do you own 32 Shoestring Road? Is that part of the property? It's in the upper right-hand corner, maybe there?
The building that's up there?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. That's the, I think, the original owners that owns that? Is that the garage that you're talking about?
I just see it listed here.
The tract is building...
I just see it, yeah, it's got a number and it's...
Yeah, I don't know.
All right, 'cause... Okay, 'cause I noticed that on the bottom right-hand corner of the property, assess that 32 Shoestring Road, there is roads and campgrounds proposed that are off-site. So, you're gonna have to... I would recommend... It's on... I can show you here, it's...
Yeah, I think that's...
Right, 'cause I see yours cuts off at the property line, but I see down in this area right here, there's a couple campsites and a roadway and...
There should be any...
Yeah, appears that that was exist... Existing conditions in that corner, and then, I guess that well there too. It looks like that well is actually on the property for 32 Shoestring Road, which I'd want clarification on whether or not that was a well that was installed by the previous owner.
Okay, are you talking about the...
That one there.
Yeah.
Okay, you were saying 32 Shoestring's over here?
Well, it's 32 Shoestring runs...
It's just a long, long piece, a lot longer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can under... Yes, it's the same, it's the same there.
Well, this is, yeah, probably not the same.
Yeah, at the moment, it doesn't look like the applicant's proposing anything that's off their property at that location, but...
Accidents could happen, yeah, so that's why I wanted to clarify that. In regards to setbacks off of other properties, will there be? Because, again, 32 Shoestring Road comes down there, and I would expect that we would require some form of 10-foot setback. And how do you plan to differentiate between each site? Is it gonna be through landscaping or fencing or...?
It won't be fencing, but it'll be some landscaping, but we're waiting, that landscaper just came on board last week.
Yeah, we're working with that landscaper, he's gonna start drawing the trees. The trees that we're gonna plant in are gonna be right by the lot line and everything.
Okay.
So, we're gonna kinda get our kids out.
Right, I wasn't a big fan of, like, you fencing in everything, 'cause I know it'd be probably expensive for you, but also because of the area, and there's a lot of issues in regards to deer is gonna be running through your campsite at some point, you know, and that's deer and various other issues. And during the on-season, I would like to see some sort of vermin control program, because you will be dealing with a lot of people, a lot of food, a lot of...
I believe they have that now.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to bring up just one thing on the special permit, just to make sure we clarify that. This isn't a proposed use, it's an existing use, so I'm not sure how that special permit fits. We're not changing any of the uses, so usually, the special permit is for... And my idea with you, I'm just trying to understand, why would be maybe...
Yeah, I guess I would defer to the legal counsel on that.
Well, whether it's existing or not, it's... I would think that, I would, yes, I think I would defer to counsel on that too, but it's gonna be a complete restructuring of the site.
Yeah, the addition of the wastewater treatment facility and the expansion of the wells and whatnot, I would see it as... I can definitely see it on the special permit side, but, as you said, I think we're gonna need to talk about that aspect.
And I guess it should be noted, the applicant submitted it as a special permit, so we can still move forward with the review, but if the board doesn't need to issue the decision as a special permit, then there's not as many conditions on the approval. I guess it's a different approval ultimately.
So...
So, you'd like to ask, you check with...
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I'll check with KP, and we have a few things here to look at and to make sure that this is right, but when the application was made out, it was site plan, special permit, and there was a question about special permit, I felt that we probably should keep the special permit in, and we can review it as site plan, special permit, but later on, if it's determined by KP that it isn't a special permit, then we could drop it, but they just wanted to get this thing rolling along so that they could try to open this up in the summer, you know, whenever their thing...
Well, mobile home parks are prohibited in our town, is that... I know we have a prohibition on new development of, I can't recall whether it is campgrounds or mobile home parks or whatever the case may be, so I'll have to look into that too, yeah.
All right. So, we have some things to look at, I'll contact KP Law and see what we can do. I think right now, what we can do is, we have two things, if we could continue this meeting to make a motion to continue this meeting to January 25th at 7:00.
Will that give you guys enough time to get everything together?
Yes, we got, we have Andy's on the plan, he's also gonna put water gates on the water line to make sure it's nice for certain parts of the water, so there are things that are still being submitted, and also, we have a site walk.
Yeah, I'll do the site walk after we continue the meeting.
I just wanna make sure you guys don't have enough time to get done what you need to...
We wanted to turn about the building plans, the exterior elevation and all that. We'd like to take plans from another park that we do, that would be similar to the pavilion, that would be very similar to something we've already done.
Yeah, no, I think that would be fine, doesn't need to be architectural drawings prepared specifically for these, but most importantly, I'd like a plan that would... There's a couple bylaw requirements for buildings on the facade requirements, would wanna make sure, you know, make sure that is part of the application package, and then, most importantly, building heights. I don't anticipate that you're proposing anything over that height limit, but want something included in the plan set to confirm that.
I'm not sure I heard the last statement about, can we do the site walk?
Well, right now, we'll continue the meeting, I'd like to hear a motion to continue the meeting to January 25th at 7:00, and then, after we get through this, we'll establish a time for a site walk.
Cunealie Shea will make...
Yes.
Cunealie Shea will make a motion to continue the meeting to January 28th in regards to...
I'll second that.
Okay, so... Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Cunealie Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Okay, now, so, let's do, we'll do a site walk. Right now, a lot of the rain has been, a lot of the snow's been washed away in the rain, so that's nice. So, when would we be able to get out there to do a site walk? Would you... Sometimes, see, today's the 11th, so we have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, and then we have next week. What would be the best time for the members of the Planning Board to go out there?
I'm shooting for next week, 'cause it looks like it's gonna be very cold this week.
All right, well...
Next week, I'm on call this week.
Next, okay, next week, okay. So, okay, so, say Monday, the 17th?
Nope, I'm on call.
Oh, what day?
After Monday, 'cause it's...
Oh, after Monday?
Yeah.
How about Tuesday? Tuesday, the 18th?
Fine with me.
Say, at noon time? Can we do something like that?
Sure.
I don't know if there's anything to be... It's a big area out there. I think the... When I went out there with the building inspector and the Board of Health agent, we took golf carts or something like that, yeah. Yeah, so...
'Cause they eat it.
Or, I mean, you could even drive around there, but you could take golf carts too. Can't drive?
'Cause of the construction going on.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right. So, dress warmly, board members, if you're gonna go. All right, so, let's schedule, so we'll have a site walk on January 18th at noon time. We'll meet there. All right? The meetings continue to the next meeting. I don't know if we're gonna be able to finalize everything in the next meeting, this may take another, but we'll see how it progresses.
Or four of us.
I mean, it's a big project.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A lot more information on this.
Okay. Oh, jeez, sorry, Kevin, I didn't ask you if you had any questions.
That's all right.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay. All right, so, next thing on the agenda is we have to... Everybody got the decisions for the poles? The removal of the wood poles?
Thank you.
And the installation of the concrete poles, and one was on 324 slash 340 Tremont Street, and the other was 62 Rochester Road. I'll just say that we got these a few days ago. I'll just say that we got these a few days ago. It seems like a simple decision, but, and again, I sent these off to KP Law, and I haven't received an answer yet. I don't know if Andy had a chance. Andy said that he would look at the decisions, although, no, he's not a lawyer, but he would see if it was reasonable or not. You know, we could, if, you know what? We could go through this, and if there's any discussions on these, we could either sign these tonight, if people wanted to, if the board members wanted to, or we could, I could ask for KP Law to take a look at this, and we could do this at our next meeting.
I would very much recommend that KP Law have a chance to get over.
All right, so let's just go through it anyway. Just to see, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at this or not. I'm not gonna go... What else I'll do is I'll start at the findings. It's just a short thing. At the beginning of this, it just gives a history of the project and where we are today. And then, the findings, it says, "The applicant submitted an application for a minor modification to site plan dated December 6, 2021, requesting that the planning board approve a modification to the 2019 Planning Board Decision Approving the Site Plan Review and Special Permit to Utilize Precast Concrete Piles to Support the Solar Panel Racking as shown on the plan set submitted." "The planning board, in connection with the December 28, 2021 meeting, planned set dated December 22, 2021, this configuration is a modification from the plans that were approved in the 2019 Planning Board Decision approving the Site Plan Review and Special Permit and a result in the removal of the existing timber piles that were installed on site. The board voted 3-2-0 to approve the above minor modification to the special permit with the following conditions." And it was just one condition here. "The applicant shall follow all the conditions of the July 31, 2019 Planning Board Decision approving the Site Plan Review and Special Permit as modified by the December 22, 2021 Plan Set approved by this date, by this December 28, 2021 Decision."
Well, before we go any further, I mean, I think we have to discuss that this thing was done in error. This, the vote was held in error.
Aye, well, we...
Well, if you look at, if you go in and you look at the Mass General Laws, what is it, Part 1, Title 7, Chapter 48, Section 9, says, "Each application for a special permit shall be filed with the petitioner, with the city or town clerk, and a copy of said application, including the date and time of the filing certified by the city or town clerk, shall be filed forthwith by the petitioner with the special permit granting authority. Special permit granting authority shall hold a public hearing for which a notice has been given, as provided in the Section 11, on any application for a special permit within 65 days." Excuse me, "From the date of filing of such application, provided, however, that a city council having more than five members designated to act upon such application may appoint a committee of such council to hold the public hearing. The decision of the special permit granting authority shall be made within the 90 days following the date of the hearing, the public hearing. The required time limits for a public hearing and said action may be extended by written agreement between the petitioner and the special permit granting authority. A copy of such agreement shall be filed in the office of the city or town clerk. Special permit issued by a special permit granting authority shall require two-thirds vote of the boards of more than five members, a vote of at least four members of a five-member board, and a unanimous vote of a three-member board."
All right, so basically, what you're saying, we should have KP Law take a look at this. So that's what I'm recommending right now. I'll ask Amy, or ask someone from KP Law to take a look at this and give them the history, and so...
And before any of us that were on the board after this thing was originally decided, we're supposed to have a presentation with all the plans and everything in front of us in a public hearing.
All right.
Before we should be voting on it.
I'll talk to Amy about that, there were different opinions, so... So, let's...
Who wrote the decision?
Rob Dambroso, the attorney for the solar company.
Absolutely no question.
Yeah, okay, no, I understand. I mean, right now, we have no planner. So, the, what I've been trying to do is, and I really haven't established a real good connection with KP Law, but what I'm trying to do is to get the lawyers for the applicant and KP Law to get together to come up with decisions. So it'll be approved by town council, and it'll be, you know, whether KP Law writes it. I mean, right now, KP Law hasn't been with us at these meetings, so, and that's something I have to talk to the new town administrator about. I spoke to the old town administrator about it, but he's gone now, so I get to start from scratch and see what we can do to have somebody come in. But I don't think it's, it's not unreasonable. I'll go over this tomorrow, and we'll try to get in touch with KP Law, because we have several things for them to go over, and I'll... So we'll try to get a decision on what to do here. I don't know, Andy, you have anything to say?
Yeah, I concur that the, it's appropriate for the applicant's legal counsel to write an initial draft of the decision letters, but any of these should have the town's own legal counsel review them. Fuston O'Neil has been receiving copies and reviewing them as well, but strictly making sure that the waivers and conditions of approval that we include in our recommendation review letters to the town and the planning board are included appropriately. I guess I, as the chair mentioned, I am not a lawyer, so I stay in my realm when I'm reviewing documents.
I only say that because that's what you told me. All right, so that'll go off to KP Law, and we'll see if we can get them here at our meetings to participate. And maybe now that we have a new town administrator, I can get somebody to kind of push this. So, then we come to number five on other business is, we received, I've received an open-meeting law complaint about the last meeting. So I spoke to the assistant town administrator and said how the selectmen handled this is that they have KP Law take care of this. So I need a motion to authorize town council to draft a response to the open-meeting law complaint on behalf of the planning board.
I will make that motion.
So do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Ellen, and then Kevin. Okay, so we'll have a, we'll have a roll call vote.
I'm unfamiliar with this, I haven't seen anything on it, so I'll have to abstain. All I know is that I know meeting law complaints, so I don't know anything else about it, just what was on the agenda.
Well, the open, I received an open-meeting law complaint, as did Kevin and Ellen, and it was addressed to three board members, I believe, I don't...
I don't, yeah.
If you didn't know anything about it, then you weren't addressed. And so, so I had to go to the assistant town administrator and ask how to handle this. So, okay, but I mean, if you want to abstain, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it.
John, do you want to vote?
I'm gonna have to follow suit. I don't know anything about it.
All right, okay, so Bruce Mackey says aye. Kevin? Okay, Kevin says aye.
Aye, Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Ellen says aye, okay, so that was 3-0-1, okay. All right, so, next. I just want to say to any members, we've been getting a lot of records requests, and so this is under planning board member notes, and planning director notes. So I just want to say to any of the planning board members that have been getting any records requests, please see me or Cara Dayhill, and we can tell you how to address that, how to address those record requests. The second thing I want to speak about is, I spoke to the new town administrator last week, Robert Fennessy, and I told him about the situation with the town planner, and also about looking for a possible interim planner. And also, this week, a lady that took the minutes of the meeting decided she didn't want to do it anymore, so we're looking for somebody to take the meeting minutes. And tonight, hopefully, by video, Sue Hannan is gonna do our notes tonight. Just want to say, the third thing I want to say is that at our next meeting, along with the other things that we have to address, the other projects that are coming to the board, we will go into an executive session for Ironwood Renewables, that's the plan. And that's all I have. Anybody else want to say anything? All right, so we have the minutes for, I believe it was December 14, 2021. Also, minutes for 12-28, we have not received those yet. And those will be the last minutes we get from Mary Ann Graham, so...
I have a couple corrections for the ones for 14.
Okay.
I marked them up, but...
Oh, you know what you could do, why don't you just give, can you give those marked up ones to me? And then, why don't you explain what they are?
Oh, well, it's pretty much, it's pretty easy. Cornelia Shea indicates property has been in continuous ownership, but what I indicated was property has not been in continuous ownership. Such property are a...
Paragraph 4.
Or, and it should have been or.
Okay.
And here, a have missing.
All right.
Should not be wait, and then it's 40A and 40B and...
Okay.
I just marked them up, I can...
Yeah, if you could mark them up and give me a copy or whatever, and I'll have, and we'll do it, and then maybe we'll table the minutes until the next meeting, when they're corrected. Anybody else have anything else?
Just one thing with regards to the public records requests. I would hope that everybody would just provide what they have. I mean, that's what we're supposed to do, right?
That's what the law states, yeah?
Yep.
All right, so I'll, you can get those, you know, you can either give them to me or you can give them to, to Secretary...
Call if you want to do it.
Or if you have them ready for me tonight, I'll just take them and, yeah.
Can we email these to you, any corrections, or...
If you want to take a look at these...
I haven't had a chance, I haven't had a chance. I've been working my tail off, so I haven't had a chance to read them yet.
Yeah, if you have anything, you can email them, either, you could email it to me or Michelle.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll have them fixed up by the next meeting, okay?
All right.
All right, so, so we'll table those and do the corrections, and so I just need a motion for an adjournment.
Cornelia Shea makes a motion for adjournment.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye?
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, all right, thank you, and good night, everyone.